Good evening. Can you hear me in the council chambers?
Affirmative.
Good evening, everybody. Apologies, I couldn't be there in person with you. I had a last minute item come up that I preferred being here than not not being able to be present in general. Is everybody ready to begin, Amy?
We are ready when you are, Chair.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I'm going to call to order. It's just after 6:00 PM. The joint, sorry, I'm looking at the Joint Council and Planning Commission Agenda for Monday, September 8th, 2025. We'll start with a call to order and a roll call, excuse me, by Amy Amerson.
Commissioner Fernandez-Madrid? Thank you. Commissioner Nordstrom?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Chavez?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Rake?
Here.
Commissioner Rhodes? Here. Chair Stewart?
Good evening, here.
All in attendance, ready to go.
I see it's a Joint Council Planning Commission Agenda, at least as it says on the top. Is our council members present or is this not formally a council meeting?
It is a formal planning commission that is a scripter.
Okay, no worries. We will start with the approval of the minutes from April 14th, May 12th, and August 11th, 2025, starting at page two, continuing through page four, one page per piece. Did anybody have a chance to review those and identify any modifications that you would recommend prior to our voting to approve all three in unison? Doesn't sound like there's any objections. I would accept a motion to approve the minutes for April 14th, May 12th, and August 11th.
Commissioner Madrid, I would make that motion.
Commissioner Rake, second?
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Minutes approved unanimously. At this time, we would welcome any citizen comments for any items that are not on this evening's agenda. Is there anybody in Zoom land or anybody in person that has a non-agenda item comment for this evening?
Not on the agenda? Oh, no. Okay. Chair, we have one for not on the agenda.
Excellent. We would welcome them now. We usually limit these to about two or three minutes. We will let you know if for some reason it's running long. I can't see you, but the team can see you. And I'll just request that you speak as close as possible into the microphone so that people in Zoom land can hear you.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Good evening. My name is Anita White. I've lived in Carlton at 728, or 38, South Second Street for about 25 years. I should know, Andrew. I'm here tonight because I deeply care about our city and how it grows responsibly, fairly, and with sensible long-term vision. As you are considering housing developments, I urge you to prioritize environmental-friendly street lighting. Carlton lies along migratory bird corridors, and excessive or poorly designed lighting disrupts those routes. Other Oregon cities have adopted dark sky compliant fixtures and balance safety with ecological responsibility. And Carlton can do the same. I also strongly oppose any blanket ban on street trees. Trees aren't just decoration. They cool our streets, they absorb storm water, and they improve air quality. The argument about sidewalk damage is totally unnecessary. PGE already provides a list of sidewalk-friendly species with shallow, non-invasive roots. Removing trees from our cityscape to save money today will create far greater costs in heat, water, and livability tomorrow. Personally, I wouldn't want to buy a house on a street where trees aren't welcome. Finally, transparency and fairness matter. In the past, Carlton residents were told this building, beautiful as it is, was funded by a grant. Instead, our water rates are among the five highest in the state with fees far outweighing what we actually use. When leaders make decisions that benefit friends and family, that erodes public trust. We can, we must do better. I'm asking you, all of you, to make choices that honor Carlton's future. Smart lighting, tree-lined, because Carlton deserves to be known for common sense, vision, and integrity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I appreciate your comment this evening. Is there anybody else present, Amy, that we would like to welcome up at this time?
John? And these are items not on the agenda. These are for speaking points of items not on the agenda, which would be if you have a com- all right, come on up.
Evening all. John Dörner, live down on Daughtry Road. I've been here about nine years. And as I'm driving into the meeting tonight on East Hendricks, the road is paved from the county, county line where, you know, the city starts on up to Sixth Avenue. Wow. That is really great. That's something, that's a beautiful section of road. And then we hit the city. And I don't know, somehow I think the city had something to do with get that, getting that section paved. And y'all are building all over the city and everything. And I would encourage you to, whatever you did, keep doing that thing where they pave the roads better. Because you all know that we've got some potholes all over the city. So maybe with all this building that's going on everywhere, you could get some help to get the roads fixed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anybody else who has a comment on a non-agenda item this evening?
Anthony, this is Commissioner Madrid. I just want to bring it to our attention because as I was checking my news register, the notice for this public meeting still lists an address down on West Grant Street where the mods were when the building was being built. So perhaps we could contact the news register to get that corrected. It does have the time right, but it lists the meeting at 9:45 West Grant and then via Zoom. And then right under that, this is obviously a typo, the Dayton Fire Board. So we should probably correct that with the news register to make sure our public meetings are factual. Thanks.
I appreciate that. We'll make sure that that information is shared, not only with the city staff, but as well as the city attorney, just for any procedural matters that need to be updated, if if that is the case. If we have no other items, our primary project this evening is addressing a legislative agenda item LA 2025-02 and 03. That's the Transportation Plan Update and Development Code update, starting at page six on our agenda packet this evening. This is a public hearing to consider proposed amendments to the Carlton Comprehensive Plan and the Development Code. City case files, again, 2025-02 and 2025-03, both of them LA. Section 17.212.020 of the Carlton Municipal Code identifies this as a type four procedure for conducting legislative public hearings. The decision before the commission is a matter of recommendation from the commission to the city council for adoption of proposed amendments to the Carlton Comprehensive Plan and the Development Code. This time, I would like to invite any commissioners to report any conflicts of interest or abstentions, any bias, or anything else that you feel like you need to declare at this point. Since I'm not present, I'll just ask you to raise your hand if you do have anything to state at this time. I'm not seeing any. You can let me know. You can speak up if otherwise. Otherwise, we will begin. The order of the public hearing will be as follows. There will first be a brief oral report from staff addressed to the commission. This will be followed by commissioner questions of staff, questions of staff from the commissioners. Thereafter, any person attending tonight will be invited to present oral testimony. Staff will then be invited to comment on testimony or evidence presented. And finally, the commission will close the hearing, deliberate, and decide on whether to forward a recommendation of support to the city commission. At this point, we're ready to begin with a brief oral report from staff, and so we'll start with Mr. Scott White, our Contract City Planner, who will direct this next portion of our meeting. Ms. Wright?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, yes, Scott White, Contract City Planner. And I'm going to provide a portion of the oral staff report for this evening. We have some others here this evening, namely Eddie. If I, hopefully I don't misspell it, mispronounce it. Monte, Monte, Montejo. Well, I got, yeah, if I got it right there. No, it's good enough. All right, well, I'm so sorry. Okay, I got Robin Shalinski. I got that one right. Gordon Monroe is a city engineer. Tyler Yeoman-Rillet is the city, I want to say the attorney. And then Amy Amerson is the city recorder and manager. So all of us have been involved with this, so it is staff plural. I do want to just kind of mention the staff report that we have prepared. It's a short one of six pages covering a packet that you have of 189 pages. So it's a very large amendment proposal before you, legislative amendment proposal to the Carlton Comprehensive Plan and the Carlton Development Code. And so that's the split in the two case files. One is associated with the Comprehensive Plan, the other associated with the Development Code. And if the council approves both of the case files, there, there are two separate ordinances. But we can conduct a hearing concurrently for both of these amendments. And we have sort of a breakdown as far as the, that 189-page packet that you've been provided, and it was provided two weeks ago from today. We have Exhibit 1, which is the Draft City Transportation Systems Plan, or you'll hear TSB for short, as we've made several references to that in past work sessions. So that is pages eight through 127 of tonight's agenda packet. And that is pretty much an update of the existing Transportation Systems Plan adopted back in 2009 by the city. It's a, it's generally a replacement. It's a significant major update of the Comprehensive Plan. There's Exhibit 2. That's pages 129 through 149. Exhibit 2 is the Draft Comprehensive Plan Chapter Updates. So we're kind of replacing a chapter that's mostly on policies and speaks to the Transportation Systems Plan, but it's it's a shorter portion of the Comprehensive Plan document. And then Exhibit 3, that is some draft changes specific to the Development Code. These are all transportation-related provisions of the Development Code to which we are proposing change, basically to implement the Transportation Systems Plan. We want to make sure that we have consistency with what is shown in the Transportation Plan. If I can say it, maybe just say TSB at this point. Exhibit 4 is the written oral comments that have been received to date. Some of these are summarized in the minutes that are shown, and that's pages 164 through 183. And also some written testimony that has been received to date. So I just want to go over some housekeeping things here. We are required by the code and by state law to conduct two hearings. So one is tonight. And then we have also noticed another hearing before city council, October 7th, 2025. I hope we've also identified the correct address for that hearing as well. We will check that. There was a good note that Commissioner Hernandez Madrid had noticed noticed there, so we will check into that. But page 2 of the staff report identifies a lot of what we have done, consistent with what's required, with as far as notice notification, posting on the city website, mailing to affected government agencies. That would include the Oregon Department of Transportation and Yamhill County. So we've followed the steps that are required by law to get to this point of public hearing. There's also a need for identifying what's relevant when we do amend the Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan. We do have to evaluate the proposal against what is relevant with respect to Oregon land use statewide planning goals. And to a portion of the staff report, pages eight through, through, the agenda would be eight through through 10, we go into detail with respect to what goals are applicable. And for transportation, it's goal 12. And also with goal 12, we have several rules. Under Oregon Administrative Rules, OAR, there is Chapter 660, Division 12, which calls attention to Transportation Systems Plan, the components, what it's required to encompass, and what it needs to speak to if it is located in certain areas. Fortunately, Carlton is is small, as there are several thresholds in the transportation planning rule that are only applicable for large cities. Carlton is also not located within a metropolitan planning organization. That would be like Metro near the Portland area there, where we would have to address a number of rules if that were the case here. So on page, what, the five of the staff report, 10 of the the packet, we go through a lot of disqualifications, where basically saying a lot of rules in this particular chapter of OAR do not apply. And so that's, that's been our approach here, is mostly saying that, yes, we're doing the right thing with updating the the code. We're not expanding the planning area. We're not looking at any zoning or comprehensive plan land use map changes with this amendment proposal. We haven't received any written testimony from agencies. ODOT has been a partner through this process. They have, they have funded the the TSB through the Transportation Management Program that the city received a grant for. And so there's no concerns that have been conveyed by ODOT and the Department of Land Conservation and Development, or DLCD for short. They typically provide some comments, but we have not received any comments to date. So there is one recommendation that staff is forwarding to the Planning Commission tonight, that we have a draft motion, should the Planning Commission tonight decide to forward on a recommend recommendation of support to the city council when they go forward with that public hearing, as I mentioned, on October 7th. There is a draft there that basically would would move to approve the draft TSB as shown in Exhibit 1, the Transportation Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan, that's Exhibit 2, and the code changes all in Exhibit 3. Any specific word changes that the Planning Commission says, hey, we, we want to make some changes here? That's fine. That'd be great tonight to orally prepare that. But what would happen is we would ensure that any change is communicated to the city council ahead of that October 7th meeting. At this time, I'll turn it over to Eddie, who's going, has a PowerPoint presentation. He's going to give you more background on what has occurred so far and some additional insight on on things. Eddie?
Check. All right. Good evening. All right, folks. My name is Eddie Montejo. I'm a senior planner and project manager at Parametrics from Portland. I think we're pulling the presentation up shortly, but thanks for the opportunity to be here and present. I know that I've spent a lot of time with many of you talking about the TSP. So for today's presentation, I'm going to be brief. I'm really going to provide just kind of a high-level overview of some of the key aspects of the TSP and what it is, also for the benefit of the members of the public that are here. And then the rest of the time will be back over to you for public testimony and for Planning Commission deliberation. So without further ado, I will just wait for the PowerPoint to come up and then we can get started. And I do apologize if I look away to look at my phone. I have a flat that I realized that I had right as I arrived in the parking lot, so I'm waiting for roadside assistance. Transportation-related, I guess. All right, and you can, yeah, you can just move on to the next slide, please. Is there a clicker by any chance? No, okay. All right, so I'll glaze over this. Scott already mentioned it, but this is a partnership effort between the city, the Oregon Department of Transportation, the firm that I represent, Parametrics, and then also Urban Lens Planning. Robin, who's on the call, supported the land use aspect of the TSP update and is one of our, one of our partners for the project. Next slide, please. Okay, so I know many of you have heard this at nauseam, but for the, again, for the benefit of the public, what is a TSP? So TSPs are mandated by Oregon state law and represent long-range planning to drive the community's investment in transportation infrastructure over the next 20 years, so fairly long planning horizon. The key things that a TSP provides for a community are a list of projects, programs, and policies to address all of the transportation needs in the community, and again, looking at that 20-year horizon. One of the things that is is typical of a TSP is that they are holistic and system-wide, meaning that they look at all modes of transportation. So not only looking at improvements and deficiencies for driving, but also for people walking, using a wheelchair, bicycling, and folks that use public transportation. Like I mentioned, this is intended to be a collaborative, a collaborative process with our agency partners, but also hugely driven by community input. So as you know, we've had many meetings together to hash this out and several opportunities to share this with the public. And last but not least, the TSP provides an implementation strategy for how to move forward with the plan's recommendations. So as part of the TSP, in that thick packet, there are planning level cost estimates for each of the projects. There is a list of potential potential funding sources that the city could pursue over time to help implement those projects. And then also policies and code updates, like those that Scott just outlined, that help support the implementation of the TSP at a policy level. Excellent. Okay, one of the other things that I wanted to make sure that we touched on today, given that this is the first public hearing, is clarifying what is not a TSP. I think we've had several questions come up in the past that to me indicate maybe a misunderstanding of of what the TSP can do and what it cannot do. So like I mentioned, it's a policy document. What a TSP is not is a capital improvement plan. So as you all know, the city has a capital improvement plan where you program in funding and construction dollars to actually get things built. A TSP is instrumental in that, you know, identifying projects in the TSP is often the first step to get it into a CIP and is an important bridge to that, but in it of itself is not a list of projects that the city is committed to building or funding. Another thing that's important to to clarify is like Scott mentioned, and like I've been referencing, TSPs are required under state law to implement the statewide planning goal 12, often referred to as the transportation planning rule. But what the TSP is not is an ODOT plan or a state plan. This is really about local needs and deficiencies based off of everything that we've heard from community members, the Planning Commission, city council, et cetera, and the plan tries to very directly address what we've heard is important to you all. The other thing that, oh, sorry, one more thing I want to touch on. I'll just mention it. So I'm pretty sure that last bullet there was getting at the the project list. So often in TSP adoption processes, communities can get wrapped around the axle with regard to the list of projects. These are conceptual projects. Like I mentioned before, what we've programmed are planning level cost estimates, recognizing that costs, of course, can change over time as labor and materials change over time. City priorities can change, representation and leadership can change, et cetera. So this is really just a documentation of the of the best ideas that we have now, again, based on community input, but are certainly able to be changed over time. Really quickly, as far as project timeline, we've been doing this project for about two years now. We're at the tail end of the process. We've completed Milestone 2 of Public Engagement, where we focused on sharing proposed transportation improvements, getting through that cost estimating exercise, exploring potential strategies for funding, and also going through project prioritization. Like Scott mentioned, we have one more hearing, at least as part of our work with with you all, with the city council in a public hearing, which will hopefully lead to adoption, but if not, the city has the prerogative to go forward and continue having community discussions around this. Next slide. All right, one thing that we introduced early in the process, and I want to bring back now that we're in our first public hearing, is just reiterating once again how decisions have been made throughout this planning process. So on the screen, you can see that public engagement was used to inform all levels of decision-making for this project. So I'll say more about the specific public engagement we did, but all of that input has been deliberated closely and critically through the project management team, the project advisory committee, the Carlton Planning Commission and city council, and have kind of worked through this decision-making framework iteratively as we've developed the plan. Next slide, please. All right, so here's a snapshot of all the engagement that we've done to date, starting back in December of 2024. Here, we had our first open house. Simultaneously, we also launched an online component to that, so there was an online survey and materials that were posted to give people the opportunity to participate that way. We had a second open house in April, again, here. And currently, we actually just launched a, an additional survey. So I don't know the exact dates for that. Maybe Amy or somebody else can fill me in on that, but my understanding is that that survey is out at least through October to collect additional feedback on TSP priorities, just to make sure that the ultimate recommendations in the plan reflect what people care about the most. We also had four project community advisory committees listed there with many of you, which were instrumental in working through some of the technical aspects of the TSP recommendations. And then we've also had four Planning Commission and City Council joint sessions, with the most recent one concluding on August 11th. So again, we've done quite a bit of outreach as part of this process. Next, next slide, please. Here's just a quick snapshot of some of the materials that we've used to gather feedback along the way. So if you remember, if you were here, we had boards all around the room with information about the plan. We had a paper survey. We had the online survey where we collected feedback in real time. And then we also had open-ended written testimony that we accepted throughout the project, such as what you can see on the screen there. All right, and really quickly, I just want to highlight our assessment of the community priorities that we've heard to date and how those have informed the TSP recommendations. So early on, we asked community members and the Planning Commission about goals and objectives. One of the key things that came out of that discussion was a request to incorporate livability and quality of life as a core concept and how we think about the TSP. So there's a a policy related directly to that now. Oregon 47 Main Street, of course, one of the biggest headaches in town from a transportation perspective. So we heard a lot of feedback about that and the need to clarify traffic operations at North Yamhill and South Pine to improve safety in that area. And then also generally, again, kind of relating back to those goals and objectives, just encouraging policies for more livable downtown. We also heard a lot about the school, of course, and the need to prioritize sidewalks, walking paths, crossings, et cetera, near Yamhill Carlton Elementary School, and of course, along East Polk Street and South Third, being important connectors to that school. We also heard about the importance to access to parks and destinations, including Wenerbur Park, the pool, Lad Park, and then also considering opportunities for local walking paths elsewhere, such as along Hong Creek and the historic rail corridor. We heard about the need for bicycling, although we also heard a balanced response to that. Maybe not so much interest in having bicycle facilities on Main Street, but certainly looking for opportunities to encourage bicycling in some of the neighborhood areas that are lower. but certainly looking for opportunities to encourage bicycling in some of the neighborhood areas that are lower stress and lower volume. And then in terms of future roadways, we do have a future streets map that I'll touch on, but that was an important process informed directly by Gordon and Scott to ensure that the TSP reflected opportunities to align new development and construction with the city's vision for the future transportation system. Alright, planning commissioners and city councilors know that we spent a lot of time talking about the local street standards and the cross sections for existing and future streets in the community. Thematically, I would say the big thing is right sizing the overall footprint of some of the street designs to the local community context. I know for myself, when I looked at some of the collector's street standards initially, when I was getting involved in the project, I thought they were too wide. 71 feet is basically a highway and this is a small town and it seemed like there was a lot of opportunity to, you know, get that right. The other thing relates to balance. I know that there's still some ongoing community discussion as part of this. I think that's part of what the survey is trying to do, but trying to balance the need for travel lanes and parking with active transportation, sidewalks, trees, landscaping, et cetera, and balancing those desires with the maintenance realities and funding realities that the city's facing. Last but not least, one of the things that we heard from a community perspective early on was making sure that the plan was realistic, right? So considering that new local funding sources would be challenging, but if they came in, would need to leverage tourism and visitor activity to be most successful, making sure that the project list was prioritized in such a way that it really highlighted the most feasible and fundable projects, given the current budget, and then also looking at cost effective options where it makes sense. So in other words, not going full build and tearing up roadway and doing these big capital investments, but really looking at where you can make an impact and make the system safer and more accessible with things like paint, signage, et cetera. Excellent. Alright, so that's the, the preamble. I'll get into just a couple of things in the sort of meat of the transportation system plan, and then I'll hand it back over to, to you all. Okay, so I think we've talked about this already, but one of the key things that the TSP does is that it helps implement the Oregon transportation planning rule. Like Scott mentioned, in the packet, there are two exhibits related to the TSP. One is the updated transportation chapter in the comprehensive plan. The city recently updated the comprehensive plan and that chapter was left unupdated or not updated, whatever, with the knowledge that the TSP would be updated thereafter. So the TSP effectively serves as the transportation element in the comprehensive plan, and you have that in your packet. There's also the updates to the development code that Scott outlined that support consistency and land use and development review. Also making sure that the language in the TSP is consistent with what you have in your code, et cetera, so that the city is able to move forward with improvements as, as recommended. Slide please. Just want to touch once again on the goals, policies, and objectives, given that basically all of the technical work was funneled through these principles. And again, these were developed in, in concert with the community and the, and the commission. So goal one is safety. Goal two is transportation for all ages and abilities. Goal three is connectivity and access. Goal four, again, directed, directly recommended by, by the community is a livability and economic vitality goal, and goal five being transportation that supports land use. Next slide, please. There's also a staff recommendation that is not currently in the TSP, but that we're likely to incorporate, assuming the, the commission supports this. There's been a recommendation to incorporate a new maintenance first policy that prioritizes investments in ongoing maintenance, pothole repair, I heard someone bring that up, and preservation before any new investments in transportation capital projects. Slide. Okay, so getting into the projects themselves, there is an estimated $2.6 million in transportation capital improvement funds that could be available for TSP projects over the 20 year life of the TSP. That's a very important number because again, we want to make sure that the TSP is realistic. Frankly, $2.6 million in a transportation context is not a lot. So again, we've had to really prioritize where we can identify cost, cost effective improvements that, that are, that are less capital intensive. So based on that figure, we've developed two lists. One is a cost constrained project list and one is an aspirational project list. Cost constrained projects are essentially those high priority projects where, that could be paid for within that $2.6 million. The total cost of those cost constrained projects is $2.2 million over 20 years, which if you broke it up over 20 years would be about $111,000, $111,000 per year, for 20 years, if only, I know, I know. So again, we, we got to this point in close collaboration with the city, specifically Shannon, who's not here today. But again, this hopefully reflects the desire to keep the, the plan as realistic as possible within what the city has access to today. Excellent. Okay, so here are the projects. So the two really big, really important projects, I would say, that, that have been produced as part of the TSP are the little red dots on the map there, R1 and R2. So those are at, on Main Street in downtown at Yamhill and Pine. And again, we've done a lot of analysis at these two intersections to understand what's going on here. Anybody who lives here knows that those are problematic. There is, there are people honking out there all the time. There are near misses. There are reported safety incidences and crashes that have occurred there, especially when visitors are in town. There's a lot of confusion at those intersections. So we've heard over and over from this community that those are the priority intersections that the TSP must address in order for this plan to be successful. So those are the, again, the most important projects that we've identified. The improvements would include all way stop controls, potentially other types of stop controls, but currently that's our, that's our best estimation of what's appropriate. Geometric improvements to facilitate turning movements, improvements to the ped crossings, better signage, updated paint, pavement markings, et cetera, all of which would contribute to a much safer and, and, and much more easy to navigate intersections. So those are, those are big ones. The other thing that we've had to do, unfortunately, again, given the, the cost constraints of the community, is really think about which crossings are most important. I want to say we identified 23 total crossing opportunities throughout the city, so a lot of crossings. But again, recognizing that a list of 23 crossings isn't of much use to the community. So where are they most important? And again, we had to kind of go back to those goals and objectives and what we've heard from you all. And we really felt that the, the best place to invest in those in the near term is along those school routes, given that there's children and families that are using those connections. It's really important that those are safe. We're also recognizing that there has been recent improvements out there, but you know, they could be improved. So that would include enhanced crossings at Main and South Third Street. Also an improvement at Polk and Third. There's already an improvement there, but this would be potentially a pedestrian activated beacon, something to really beef up the crossings there. And it's on the aspirational list, but we also recommended painting projects that can be done at a community level to help kind of clarify those intersections and make them more visible to drivers. Again, I mentioned early at the top of my presentation that the TSP intends to be balanced in its approach. So you know, we have a couple of roadway projects and crossings. We also threw in a couple of pedestrian and bicycle projects to help round out the system in this area. So the previous or existing TSP from 2009 already requires bicycle lanes on Grant Street from Yamhill to Pine. So the TSP carries forward that recommendation from the previous TSP and expands those improvements out to the park. You know, substantially, I think, increasing access, safe access to the pool and the park. Also creates a parallel connection to downtown, south of downtown, which we also heard was important. And then PP2 that you see there is that, I guess, dark orange line on East Washington Street. We recognize that that street is currently unimproved, but there's, there are opportunities with signs, paint, signage, et cetera, to create a interim link to provide school access for people walking to school. So once again, those projects add up to $2.2 million totally within the city's budget and could be implemented over time. Excellent, please. And I promise I'm almost done. Scott, looking at you here, we've worked together on this substantially. Oregon 47 realignment, of course, is a hot topic in the community. There is a previous ODOT study that looked at this. Unfortunately, due to the funding limitations that we just went over with the projects, the Oregon 47 realignment is included, but only as an aspirational project. There's no identified funding in the 20 year horizon that we can point to. So it wouldn't be fair to include it on the list. With that said, we've collaborated with the city to try to come up with some policy direction to try to move things forward despite not having it on a project list. So really quickly, what I'll mention is that there's been some zoning changes, for example, or excuse me, not zoning, street classification changes. For example, North Pine has been up classified to a collector's street to provide for a wider footprint and, and, and other improvements that could help bring about the realignment in the future. The TSP directly recommends a future refinement study to crack the case back open and look at this more seriously as a community. Like I mentioned, we did include the project on the aspirational list for future funding eligibility. There's policy recommendations regarding freight that can help address some of the freight issues in downtown. And then that in concert with the other transportation system improvements in downtown really aim to provide a, a more balanced transportation system that would help offset some of those negative impacts of freight in downtown. Excellent, please. Alright, and future street plan. So this is what you see on, on the screen there in that map. This map essentially shows future street connections and what their functional classification might be as development rolls in. What's important about this is that it links the TSP directly with the development code and gives the city the opportunity to negotiate with developers to get the kinds of improvements that the community wants. For example, trees, right? If there was a new collector's street, there would be an impetus for the city to move forward and request those kinds of improvements from developers. So it's a really important document. Next slide, please. Alright, and I'm not going to go through all of the road design standards just because we don't have the time, but this is another important outcome of the TSP process. We've updated the dimensional standards in the development code to incorporate minimum and maximum right of way. Again, trying to right size roadways for the local community context. We've identified typical street elements to accommodate emergency access and balanced transportation modes. We've also included new standards to help differentiate new and existing streets, recognizing that those would be treated very differently from a development perspective. And then again, helping to balance community desires for street improvements with ongoing maintenance needs, which are costly. Next slide, please. Alright, I think this is the last slide. And to take all of this home, the TSP recommends funding strategies. So like I said before, the TSP is a policy document. It's not a commitment that the city will or will not do any of these things, but again, it just memorializes some of the options that are out there. So some of the, the low hanging fruit, you might say, now that the city has an updated TSP or will have an updated TSP is that the city has the ability to go and secure federal and state grants, such as a small city allotment program. The city's been a recipient of this in the past and will be eligible in 2027. There's also other transportation and modally specific grant programs out there that's, that the city could consider, such as safe routes to school, sidewalk improvement program, Oregon community pads, et cetera. They all have their different pros and cons and eligibility criteria that the city would need to work through, but there are grant opportunities out there for the city to go and find funding to actually make some of these improvements. Another strategy would be to use any grants that the city obtains to meet local match requirements. So this is legal in many contexts. Many communities in Oregon do this, where they'll essentially stack grant opportunities to get more capital dollars for transportation improvements, and that's something that the city could absolutely go forward, go forward with. One of the benefits of having the cost constrained list is that the city has the ability to invest in the transportation use, system using existing local sources. So again, tapping into that transportation capital improvement fund to build some of these things and, you know, making us steady investments over time to, to, to help bring about some of those cost effective projects. Of course, this also means the city could leverage local funds as match funds, which I believe the city did for this TSP. So there's some precedent for that. And potentially the hardest funding strategy for the city to go forward with, but should be considered is new local sources. So like I mentioned before, this will require lots of process, voter approval, et cetera. And all of this needs to be approached with a, a great deal of respect, recognizing that fees have been increased in this town. Utility rates have gone in the, have gone up in the past. So anything like this would have to be voter approved and would require a lot of community discussion before moving forward. Next slide. Alright, so I know I said last slide. I meant last slide of substance. A couple more for next steps. So the adoption timeline I mentioned before, we have today's public hearing for which we're, we're excited to hear from the, from the public about. And then we have another public hearing on October 7th. Depending on the outcomes of this meeting, that may be where the city council makes a recommendation to adopt the TSP by ordinance. Final adoption, I understand in the city, it may happen after the hearing. I believe there's a 30 day window for the, for the adoption to move into the effect of law. So I don't know exactly when that date will be. Often in these kinds of processes, there's additional hearings, additional community discussion. There's the survey that's floating out there right now. So there may be more discussion, which is totally great. But final adoption would happen after the collection of all of that final feedback and deliberation by the council and commissioners. Alright, so I tried to move swiftly without leaving out any important details, but that is the presentation. And I will hand it back over to the commissioners. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that expedited summary. I know we've been working with you and have had a number of public opportunities for both comment and experience. The, at this point, I'd like to ask if anybody on the commission has any questions for staff before we open the public hearing. I can't see the members of the commission at this time. I'm just waiting for the videos to update. So you're welcome to speak up if, if you do have some comment or have some questions for staff before we start the public hearing.
I do have a quick question about the cost constrained list on the TSP. There's a lot of talk about improvement of intersections and stuff like that. Where does improving our existing streets and our crosswalks fall into that cost constraint list? Because looking at public comments, I can see that that's a really important thing that people want to touch on, so.
Excuse me. Yeah, thank you for the question, Commissioner Rhodes. So one thing that I think is important to clarify is the TSP is not like a, like a pavement management or a preservation plan. The city has plans like this that are administered out of Public Works. Certainly, there's a link between those. So you know, it's not unusual, for example, to have a pavement management program included as part of a TSP. As a matter of fact, in the aspirational list, there is a pavement, I forget what it's called, but I want to say it's a pavement management program. It's an existing program that the city has. And the TSP recommendation is basically to continue funding that and funneling dollars into that, given that it's a, it's a core necessity for the functioning of the transportation network. The TSP really kind of looks elsewhere outside of that. So it's looking at capital improvements, you know, beyond preservation and maintenance that can really address some of the needs and concerns that we've heard about throughout the TSP process. So roundabout way of saying it doesn't directly deal with preservation, which is why the staff recommended that policy, right? So before we invest in any of these new fangled projects, let's make sure that we're on track with our, you know, pavement repair, preservation, et cetera. Just because, you know, as much as we tried to constrain the project list into the CI, the CIF, cost will continue to go up over time, labor will go up, et cetera. So it's, it's likely that the city will continue to face funding challenges, even in trying to do some of these modest improvements. So hope, does that answer your question? Okay, thank you. Sit back down unless there's another one for me.
Are there any other questions for staff from the commission? Hearing none and seeing none, we will go ahead and open up the public hearing component of our, our evening. The public hearing is now open for testimony from those who would like to address the commission on this agenda item. I presume there are some people there in person and there may be some people here remotely. So I would ask Amy to identify them and welcome them to the podium first, and then we'll do those who are attending remotely after. And if you are giving your comment this evening, please give your name and your address in the city of Carlton, or just your address if you happen to live outside the city of Carlton for our records, please.
Robin Gek coming to the podium.
Robin Gek coming to the podium.
Hi, commissioners. Thank you for all the work you do. That was a wonderful presentation. And I felt excited looking at, um, some of the work that you've done. And looking at, uh, the street design, seeing the sidewalks and the planting strips, et cetera. I have a very brief comment, um. And I also appreciated the, um. Uh, what the city's following was safety first and then livability. It's, uh, uh, those two are what stuck out to me that, yeah, I, I, I'm behind that too. Uh, I made a recent trip down to California to Davis. And I was struck by how Davis has, has planned their city for bikes. And for people who are walking. And, um, I just wanted to. Express how the livability piece feels so important to me. And I know we all are very well aware of the limitations of the, you know, the town as it is right now. And that we have a lot to grow into. I just want to encourage us to dream big and hold that vision. I think that Davis did that beautifully. Um, as I walked down streets, they were lined with trees. And trees where there was right next to the street and right next to the pavement. And for people who are living in climates that are, are, as our climate feels like it's getting warmer. We're having more days that are ninety and above, that it's hard to go out on a treeless street. And so I'm, that is kind of my little soapbox is the trees. I know you guys have heard me speak about this before. And, um, I just know it's possible and that, uh, it's not rocket science. Other places have done it. And I hope we don't spare, um. I don't, I don't think expense needs, I, I, I think developers can give us that. They've got, we're, we're a gem in this county. And they're lucky to be building here, in my opinion. There's a lot of developers, I think, who would wish that they could be building here. And, uh, so I think we have some leverage there. Um, so, and the last thing I just wanted to say is I, the other day, my husband and I, and we've lived here thirty one years. We've seen a lot of changes in Carlton. And we were walking to Lad Park and standing under the Blue Atlas. And I was standing on that sidewalk with that tremendous tree, looking up and thinking, oh, my God, can you imagine if this tree wasn't here? What a gift that is to us. We love that tree. And we can build our streets to include that feel. So that's my testimony. Thank you for listening. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gek. We very much appreciate it. If there's anybody else who is in the audience who would like to give comment on this agenda item, we welcome you now.
Christopher Jay, three ten West Lincoln. I've been here since the eighties. Um, I had one question about the codes. You weren't changing any of the codes and I'm out of the, I have been missing. I've been on vacation. But I would think that we'd want to change a code for that possible gas station down there for protecting the creek. I don't know if that's in your mind or if it's already there or what, but I just wanted to bring that up. And the other thing is the trees. I, I've been blown away why the people have been fighting the tree situation. I was at a meeting where they were laughing about they should be twenty five feet apart or fifty feet apart. And I'm like, this is America. Why wouldn't you want trees in our world? So anyway, yeah, please make that a priority, cause it is. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello again. Did y'all need my name and address or do run through that again? John Dorner and, uh, one, one, two, zero, zero, Northeast Medoffrey. And I was just curious, um. I guess it's been two years ago the state was going to run a reroute through the city. And I haven't heard anything more about where that went or what happened to that or where'd it go? Is that just in the rearview mirror now or where is that at? And if you all, in some correspondence or maybe this evening, could tell me what's going on with that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. White, if you'd like to just give a brief comment, if you can share anything about the progress status of the highway forty seven update. Or reroute.
Uh, yeah, just in brief, uh, re- reply that, um, there was, uh, mentioned this evening. Uh, by, by Eddie, uh, here as part of the presentation there that, uh, the highway forty seven reroute. Uh, there was, um, uh, some preliminary plans of that, that O dot had, uh. Um, I, uh, had explored, uh, that is not shown here as part of a future streets plan. Uh, it is not shown as the current, on the current future street plans, uh, of the city. Uh, it was certainly explored. It is a very, very expensive, uh, endeavor that O dot. Uh, and I think, uh, Michael, uh, he is on, on tonight here too, if he wanted to speak to that. Uh, very expensive, um, to, to promote that. So that is not part of it. However, as Eddie explained, um, there are some policy driven, uh, changes that are. Um, shown in this document. It's more of an aspirational, um, proposal to look at. That reroute in further detail. There is certainly without question desirability of that, uh, potential. Uh, and, uh, that, that would, um, remove a lot of the, um. Although the large truck traffic that you see on, uh, running through Main Street, uh, to, uh, kind of outside the downtown. Um, so, uh, but, yeah, it is not part of the T S P, um, so I just want to make sure that that's clarified.
Thank you, sir. Are there any more comments from those who are in, uh, physical attendance this evening at the Civic Center? Is there anybody in, uh, that's appearing remotely that would have any commentary to provide on this agenda item? Hearing none and seeing none, um, I think at this point, if there's no, there's no more testimony and no more additional comments from staff with respect to the questions. Uh, we can close the public portion, public testimony portion of the hearing at this time, and the commission will deliberate. No further testimony will be permitted. Unless and until the public hearing is reopening, uh, reopened. For deliberations this evening, uh, I would like to invite any of the commissioners in attendance, uh, who have any commentary. Otherwise, we do have, once everybody has expressed their perspective, we do have a motion which can be considered. Found on page eleven of this evening's agenda packet, but that would come following discussion deliberation. Mr. White, uh, is anybody interested in making any comment or would, if, and if not, is anybody interested in submitting a motion? Uh, to make the recommendation as found on page eleven of the packet or page six of the staff report.
Uh, Commissioner Rake here, I had it and then I just lost it. I move to recommend that the city council approve the draft T S P update as shown in exhibit one. And replacement transportation chapter of the Carlton Comprehensive Plan as shown in exhibit two. And the proposed transport, transportation related changes identified in the Carlton Development Code as shown in exhibit three.
Thank you, Commissioner Rake. Is anybody, uh, interested in making a second?
This Commissioner Chavez, I second the motion.
Thank you very much. We have a first and a second for the motion that is found in the text on bottom of page six of the staff report. At this time, I'd like everybody to raise their hands to show an affirmation or approval of that motion. I see all hands up and accounted for. The matter is passed and is recommended formally to the city council. For approval at next month's meeting. I believe that is on October seventh. Uh, do want to pass along the thanks to Scott, the, uh, all of the team that has been putting together quite a bit of work on this. Over a period of months, the city staff, uh, it's really very, very much appreciated. This is the kind of thing we, um, we really benefit from. Uh, as a small community, both your contract services and the interfacing with teams that can really bring a professional touch to what our, what our town needs. Um, at this point, uh, we are at a point where we're ready for adjournment. I just, I have a public, uh, an, or an announcement that I'd like to give you and share with the team is that. As of the end of twenty twenty five, I will be bringing my time on the planning commission to a close. And so I'd ask those who are in attendance and who are, uh, but all the commissioners that are present, if you would consider speaking to friends and family who might be interested in the community. I've been doing this now for about five, it'll be five and a half years at the end of, uh, this year, and it's been an opportunity to learn a whole lot about our community. And, uh, this evening is a perfect example of that engagement. And what is a multi-year and certainly a multi-month process to bring about the updated changes here to get the community input. Um, and if there's anybody you know in your lives who would like to participate, I have been participating in an at-large role. Allowing me to serve in this role, even though I'm at Carlton address, but outside the city proper. So, uh, there will be flexibility as far as, um, who could serve in the role. If you do know somebody outside of the city limits who is nonetheless interested in participating as well. And if nobody else, or sorry, go ahead. Is that Commissioner Fernandez Madrid?
Yes, it is. Firstly, I want to thank you for your service and wish you all the best. Thank you, thank you. It's always been a pleasure working alongside you. And secondly, I wanted to thank Mr. Montero for costing out all of those projects. Um, I did spend Labor Day going through this ginormous packet, cause I wanted to understand it before this evening. So I appreciated the extra time and the extra detail. And just really a fantastic job with capturing all of this work that we've spent many months doing. So very much appreciated, and I hope that we see you again on other projects. Thank you.
If nobody else has any commentary or any, any public, uh, information you'd like to share, I would accept a motion for adjournment for this evening.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Got a first from Annette. Anybody else interested in taking their next chapter of the evening?
I second that motion.
First and a second. Everybody, all in favor, big wave. Thank you so much. Apologies, I couldn't be there in person. I will be there. Uh, as soon as possible the next time. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Anthony.
Good night.